Good morning, everyone. It is 8:30. I'll go ahead and call this morning's meeting to order, please. The first item is a approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Campbell. Further discussion. Yes, thank you. All right. We will have an introduction, but that doesn't need an agenda item. Any other discussion? A motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried, thank you. Citizens to be heard. Are there any citizens here wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda? Darren, did you receive any correspondence?
We did not.
Thank you. The next item is our approval of payment of bills and vouchers. We have a motion by Commissioner Gross to approve.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Ebinger. Further discussion? Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Our minutes are presented from the January 25th and February 1st meetings.
Move to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Campbell to approve both sets.
Yes.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Gross. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. Our second item is an update on our treatment court. We have Judge Lawson with us today. And Don Keltzman, good morning.
I guess you don't have to come sit here, huh? Yeah.
Attorney Milton, would you like to?
Well, he is here as well. I mean, his office is a valuable part of our drug court team, so he can stay sitting in his special chair.[130.81][130.81](Laughter). But I just want to recognize that Attorney Milton is participating today as well. Good morning. Thanks for having us here. This is truly one of the things I look forward to each year, not only because I get to see all of you in person, but because we get to come here and talk about something that's super important to us, a wonderful asset to our community, and just a fantastic thing that the judicial branch has to offer in partnership with many, including you all. So just to present our demographic information and talk about what we've been doing recently, I'll turn it over to Don.
Good morning. I passed out a two-page handout there. That's the first page is the statistics for the program. The second page is the budget, so I'll just kind of briefly go through that. You can see that we currently have 26 participants in drug court and one in veterans court, so a total of 27 in our treatment court, which that's actually pretty good for our numbers because our all-time high is 28. So we're very close to the most we've ever had in treatment court at one time. And we're currently screening another four people, so I expect we'll probably soon have over 30.
Don, quickly, what is your capacity for individuals in the program at any one time? Are we nearing it?
We're still, we still have a ways to go because we have the two tracks. So we can take 30 total between the two counties for drug court and then another 15 for veterans court.
Okay, thank you.
You can see our demographic data there. I break down. We have currently 18 men and eight women in drug court. We've had a total now of 110 graduates since we started the program, 110 drug court graduates and one veterans court graduate. Of those, only 23 have re-offended, so that's a total recidivism rate of 20% or a success rate of 80%, as I like to look at it. So I think we're doing really well there. I mean, those numbers are far greater than what you see for people who aren't, for defendants who don't go through a treatment court. You can just see it too. I break down the graduate demographic data for you, so you can see we had 69 men graduate, 41 women. And in veterans court, it was six men and one woman. And break it down too by race. The last year was a little challenging, again, because of COVID. Since the last time I saw you, we have not had a single in-person treatment court session. We've done them all by Zoom, which it can be a little tougher to kind of make those personal connections with the participants. But I do, I want to commend Judge Lawson. She has really gone above and beyond this year, you know, putting an extra effort on those Zoom sessions. She spends extra time with each person, talking to them to try to make those connections. And our whole team, too, has really gone above and beyond. And I think we've seen good success and we're dealing with the challenges of COVID, I think, pretty well overall. And you can see too, I have the budget information on the second page. And we did lose a little funding in the last year, but we were able to get some new funding to make up for most of that. So I think we're in pretty good shape there, too. You know, in the last year, the DOC was able to increase their funding for our program and the 7th Judicial District also provided some funding. So overall, I think we're in pretty good shape there. I do want to thank personally, since I don't get to see Mr. Milton in person very often anymore, but I want to thank you, Brian, for the Clay County Attorney's Office has always provided funding for us out of their forfeiture funds, their drug forfeiture funds. And also, the Chief of Police, Shannon Monroe, has every year provided funding for us, and that's made a real difference. So thank you, Brian. And I want to thank all of you, too, obviously, because your funding, we couldn't do this program without it. And I think it's money well spent. I think it's made a difference in our community and made our community safer. And we just, we appreciate your support very much, and I think we're, we've had good results to show for it, so, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. Don, my question is, for the Clay County contribution and the Becker County contribution, is that pretty in line with the proportionate share of the participants?
Yes, I'd say it is, overall. It's pretty close.
Okay.
Commissioner Ebinger.
You mentioned Chief Monroe is contributing. I didn't see that broken out in the budget, but that, and I assume other, possibly the sheriff's office are also involved.
So actually, this year, the sheriff informed us that he would not be supporting our program any further, but he felt that his funds could be better spent elsewhere, which I think is unfortunate, but we do receive 2,500 every year from Morehead PD.
Yeah, that was something we did every year when I was there.
Yes.
I'm glad it's continuing. I was going to ask you about that, but I didn't see it broken out.
That's in the Clay County forfeiture funds. That's 5,000 from the county attorney and 2,500 from the Morehead Police Department.
Oh, that's, okay, that's what that is.
Yep, that's where that is.
Can you tell me what the reduction from Clay County was?
$2,000.
Okay. And are there any other, you had mentioned reductions earlier?
We had lost some state funding, but that, the 7th Judicial District helped make up for that.
Other questions? Commissioner Kaylee.
Judge Lawson, I have had the privilege of attending a handful of these drug court graduations, and it really is a privilege and an honor to attend those. I just wanted to commend you again for taking the time to individually connect with all of the participants, to see their puppies and their babies, and to really just assert the value that these individuals have to their families and to the community. Sometimes we need a reminder of our worth, and you just do such a beautiful job of that, and I know the rest of the staff do, too. So this is a tough program, and you show a lot of love while still maintaining the guidelines and the rules, so, thank you.
Well, thank you. That makes my soul happy.
Thank you. I will also agree. I think that having been at some of those, the, it's so rigorous to make sure that you're addressing so many different needs areas with the clients that you serve, but also, it really makes an onlooker reflect on their own lives and how we can better ourselves and be better members of society. And it's inspiring. Sometimes it's heartbreaking, but certainly, this board has seen over and over the value of the investment in this program. And it's really something that you take unfortunate, difficult circumstances and a lot of times see the outcome is just heartwarming. And Commissioner Kaylee said it right. I mean, you take people that in many ways are broken and help them and help them through a system that is confusing, but it really takes hard love for them to make it all the way through it, and it's really inspiring, so thank you.
And it's a lot of hard love. It's my hard love. It's our probation officer, Robert Fury's hard love. It's our compliance officer, Kristi Johnson's hard love. All of our CD workers that are on our drug court team, and even those that aren't, that, you know, step in to help out, from Clay County Social Services to, you know, Don, who is our fearless leader. I mean, everyone looks to me because I'm the microphone, I'm the mouthpiece, but this right here, this is the brains behind our operation. I mean, he tells me, Judge Lawson, you forgot Mr. so-and-so, so-and-so. Oh, yeah, hey, sorry. You know, I mean, this guy is the glue that holds us together. And, you know, honestly, your funding does more than financially support us. It sends a message, not only to our community, but to our participants, that, you know what? We care. We care all the way up, and that includes the county commissioners, that includes law enforcement. We have Adam Torgerson from the Morehead Police Department is a member of our drug court team. Our current compliance officer is an addict in recovery herself, whom I first met when I had a termination of parental rights case. I was the judge, she was the mom, and her baby was in foster care. She had lost two prior children. She had another baby, she was in recovery, she proved herself fit to social services and to the court. She ultimately got her child back. She now works for the State of North Dakota in the peer support division for the Department of, whatever they're calling it, mental health services or behavioral services. And we have the honor and privilege of having her as our Clay County Compliance Officer, who is just, I mean, it's amazing. It's, I mean, and the stories just go on and on in terms of success and worth, and so thank you.
Commissioner Campbell.
Well, Sad, and I do want to say that Commissioner Kaylee and Commissioner Moser were on spot with their comments on this. The only thing that I'm disappointed in the program is that graduations always seem to happen on a day when I have a conflict, so I can't join in.[744.01][744.01](Laughter).
They're always when.
Because they are, they are really, for anybody who hasn't had the opportunity to see that and to see the life-changing that goes on there. And I remember when we were first talking about a drug court and the exciting potential of what could happen. And, Don, I'm glad that you switched it from 20 to 80, because I say it every time you come here, 80% is really good. And that investment means we have 80%, of those people are back being productive in our society and, which also, like was mentioned, is big for their families, it's huge for their families, that they're back on track in a normal way. And I'm proud of this program and very thankful for it. And I will continue to support you financially, as far as I am concerned, on this board.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Not to draw this out too much, but praise is required here. During my time as chief, I had officers working with the drug court who would come back and tell me these stories. And a lot of them was, you wouldn't believe that this one's finally turned it around. This has got people that are stuck in a chain of addiction. It's something we look at right now as a commission on how we're going to address this. We have some opportunities in front of us. This community's got a huge problem with drug addiction. And to get people, their sobriety and their dignity back in their families and make them productive is an admirable thing. I supported it then with the decision to fund, and I'll continue. I think all of us are committed to that. And it's not because it feels good, it's because you're effective. There's a lot of feel-good stuff out there that people do to want to participate, and that's great. I'm glad people are motivated that way. But the bottom line is if we're going to spend taxpayers' money, you want to see results and you want to see something effective, and you have consistently brought that in. And I'm grateful for it because it's a real need here. And we're going to continue, I think, as a group of electeds, to try and find other ways to help those people in our community that are suffering with addiction. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Gross.
I guess it looks like we all support that thing, and I do, too. But if you don't support it, just attend one of the sessions. You'll turn around, and it's really, it's uplifting. It's just great. I'm glad I've attended quite a few of them and hope to again, once we open back up again. Thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. And, you know, we talk a lot about, you know, COVID, and the Zoom has really been challenging, and the COVID's really been tough, especially for folks in recovery, because it's affected services across the board. It's affected the way that services are delivered. But with everything else in COVID, there's also a silver lining, because there's some real value to doing remote hearings in drug court with folks who are farther along in the program, who are busy working their jobs and have to take half a day off work sometimes just to, you know, come participate at the courthouse and do. So, I mean, there will be some real value that we're going to get from this as soon as we can, and we're really looking forward to using that in a meaningful way, because we want to, not because we have to.
Yes. And I think, too, it should go without saying, probably, there's obviously $220,000 that are going into the funding. But if you look at what a daily per diem rate for people to be in our jail systems or prison systems, and then the cost of out-of-home placement if they have children, and it just, it's a wave effect that becomes far larger than what our investment is. The savings, you can never, never figure what the savings are to make sure these people, once they get out, have great jobs and own homes. And it's just an investment that, that the savings are unknown, but it really is substantial. So thank you, continued thank you for the hard work that you do, and I'm hopeful that we can continue to find partners that see the value in this.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. And you mentioned one just feel-good story before we wrap up today. You mentioned owning homes. I had just yesterday, I had one of the bailiffs in the courthouse come up to me and say, oh, I had one of your former graduates that I ran into over the weekend who wanted to know how to get in touch with you, and he just wanted me to pass the message on to you. And this particular graduate graduated over two years ago, and the message was, he wants you to know he's doing great. He just bought his first home, his children are doing wonderful, and he cannot thank the drug court team and you enough. And, you know, that's not just our thanks, that's your thanks, because, you know, without the funding, we couldn't do it. So that's just yesterday. So I get to do this every other week.
Yes.
I mean, talk about an honor and a privilege. So thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Our third item is our COVID-19 update, but I might take this opportunity, Darren. I know we have an exciting introduction, and I'm not sure if Kathy's new hire as well is here.
We're going to do that one next week.
Next week, okay.
So, Azad, why don't you come on up, so everybody can see your face (laughs) without the mask, maybe, so they actually see your face.
Good morning.
I have the great pleasure of introducing Azad Barawi. He is our new Clay County Diversity and Ethnic Community Coordinator. Started work yesterday, so we threw a whole bunch of stuff at him yesterday, showed him where his office was, and I had a nice conversation with Azad yesterday as well. And so, a little bit about Azad. He has a bachelor's degree in sociology. He also has a master's degree in sociology and a PhD in emergency management. So he comes to us very well-qualified. He's worked at SEP for the last eight years, and you can correct me if I get any of this wrong. And then he also has his own business as an interpreting. Azad was born in the Kurdish part of Iraq and came to the United States in 1997 as an international student. I think he started his student studies in 1998 and then became a U.S. citizen in 2012. So Azad speaks Kurdish, Arabic, and English, English better than I do most of the time and from what I've seen. And so, we are very happy. He's also worked at the city of Fargo, and he worked at the Defense Language Institute in Monterey, California. So he worked there for a couple of years, or I guess, I don't know if you were a student there or you worked there. I think you were a student at that point. Yeah. And so, I'm sure he would rather be back in Monterey, California right now, but he decided to come to Morehead, Minnesota to be our new diversity coordinator. So welcome, Azad. And I don't know if you want to have anything else to say, but we're glad that you're here.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity, and I have all intentions to serve our community the best way I can.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, welcome, Azad. We're so excited to have you here. I know Commissioner Campbell and I are on the ARPA committee when we were trying to figure out how to best utilize funds that Clay County received to make sure we're reaching all demographics of our Clay County citizens, and we're excited that this position came out of that committee. Commissioner Kaylee and I had the opportunity to be part of the interview panel, and so have had the opportunity to hear your story. I invite you to reach out to all the other commissioners for coffee or whatever, because you have a wonderful story, and I'm really excited for where you can take this position within the county, so welcome. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay. We are now to item number three, which would be our weekly COVID-19 update. We have our director, Kathy McKay, and Jamie and Becky. Good morning.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. One short.
All right, who's kicking it off today?
All right, good morning.
Good morning, Kathy.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I think I'll start. I haven't been here for a couple of weeks, so I'm not even sure what you guys have been doing. Okay, so we'll talk about the weekly cases, and you can see from the information in Clay County, from the 30th through February 5th, it was 399 new cases, and now the preliminary number from the 6th to the 12th is 154. And as we talk about the preliminary number, it's just that there is no real-time data. It needs to catch up with all of the things that Minnesota Department of Health has to do with all the cases and then to get it on the database and for us to see it. So 154 is the preliminary number, but still great because it's down. Minnesota, you can see from the 30th through the 5th, 23,002,34, and now it's 8,687. So although preliminary, it certainly appears that it's down significantly as well. In Cass County, we're seeing a decrease in cases from the 29th through the 4th, 18,12 are the new cases, and the 5th through the 11th, 1,070 new cases. And in North Dakota as well, it's from the 29th through the 4th, 8,154, and the new cases now, the 5th through the 11th, is 4,643. So it's great that we're seeing a decline in those cases. Re-infection data, so Clay County is 837 re-infection. Minnesota, 56,053, and in North Dakota, it's 12,399. So again, the information there is, if a person is counted as having a re-infection if they test positive for COVID more than 90 days after the previous lab-confirmed infection, so that's what we consider a re-infection. Weekly Clay County cases by date of test, so you can see the week beginning of October of 2021 is the initial number, and then it goes up to our data of 2/6/2022. So we have that preliminary number again of 154, but you can see the real spike in January, and then now we're seeing the decline. So it seems promising to us that we're seeing the numbers going down. The weekly case count by date of test, so this graph shows from March of 2020, when we started the pandemic, through January 15th of 2022. So again, you can see, it really depicts the four waves, some of them certainly much shorter and less of an increase, but this last one, the huge spike, and now seeing the decline. So again, anticipating this is the decline of the fourth wave.
Kathy, briefly, if I look back on our weekly reports, it seems as though our new cases are below the threshold that they maybe were when we had kids going back to school last fall. Does that, am I reading that correctly? Do you know? Becky, do you remember? I mean, just looking at that weekly Clay County case by date test graph.
Yeah, so again, you know, the 154 reported for last week is preliminary. It's kind of hard to tell. You know, we know that that number will go up. It's hard to tell at this point how much. So I really would look back, I guess, to the week of January 30th, where we're seeing that 399. So if you compare to the EPI curve that shows the cases per week throughout the span of the pandemic, you can kind of look back and see where we are now compared to where we were, you know, in September. So, you know, numbers were lower in September, I think, when school started compared to now, but, you know, another week will be, have kind of a better idea of that.
But I think if, you know, we try to find the silver lining in this, it does seem, and I know you've been hesitant to say that we're seeing a downward trend, but it seems like we are on a fairly good downside of this fourth wave. Yes. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
Just while we're, yeah, thank you. Just while we're on that, so, and I don't have my last week's numbers, but how much did that, how much did that 399, what did we report last week? That was three, it was still three-something, wasn't it?
299. So it went up, yep, it went up about 100 after the data caught up.
Okay.
Okay, the cumulative cases by age, so we're seeing that we have 18,940 total cases, and this graphic is just breaking it out by age groups. So you can see still the highest number being the 20 to 24-year-old.
So here's the graphic that's put out by the CDC just to show the level of community transmission. So status quo, we're still, still at that high level of transmission as well as the rest of the state. This is our Clay County deaths per week, and so we did unfortunately have another death reported, so we're at a total of 118 deaths for Clay County throughout the pandemic. And this is Clay County new hospital admissions per week. So we had seven new admissions reported so far for last week, with 11 admissions the week prior to that. So again, also seeing a promising trend downward with the number of people that are requiring This is the hospital capacity information for our local healthcare systems. So at the time of this report, there were a total of eight staffed adult ICU beds available in Fargo and three pediatric ICU beds available. Statewide in North Dakota, there was 20 available ICU beds for adults and three pediatric ICU beds available, which were all in Fargo.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Commissioner Kaylee.
So with Essentia in Fargo, it says, you know, not applicable. Does that mean that they don't have?
Correct.
So there just would not be a number to fill in there?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
And then this is the COVID hospitalizations in North Dakota, so a total of 120 are currently hospitalized due to COVID. The number is down a little bit from last week, when we reported 153 were in the hospital. There's currently 17 in the ICU, which is up a bit from last week, when there was 15 in the ICU. There's currently three pediatric- There's currently three pediatric admissions, and then the graph on the right again just so, shows cumulative hospitalizations due to, or broken down by age due to COVID. This is the vaccine breakthrough report that's put out by MDH, so again, just comparing side by side the information that we gave last week compared to this week. So we are seeing some increases in breakthrough infections as expected, so right now we're at 9.846% of those that have been fully vaccinated have wound up testing positive for COVID. Breakthrough hospitalizations and deaths still remain very low, we're not really seeing much movement in those percentages, which is a promising sign that this vaccine is really doing a very effective job at keeping people out of the hospital and getting serious illness.
Commissioner Ebinger.
Yeah, I read a report this week, and I believe it was Moderna, that they had determined it started losing efficacy, the boosters started losing efficacy at four months, from 90% plus efficacy to 70% plus. Is there any thoughts in looking at how we gradually just get a, it's still a great result, but we're gradually getting a little more breakthrough. Is there any discussion on additional booster shots or annual boosters, something along that line? Is that in the works, or have you heard discussions on it?
You know, I guess I haven't heard anything real specific, I don't know, Kathy, if you've been in discussions?
You know, it's, they've been talking about it, but there hasn't been anything definitive yet, but as far as the booster, they did shorten the timeframe now, so it was six months and now it's five months. So I think in response to that, you know, the leg in immunity, they're shortening the timeframe for the booster dose, both Pfizer and Moderna.
Another booster would be available five months after the first booster?
No, this is just the regular booster, the, you know, the primary series and then the regular booster, they shorten that timeframe, so it's given a month earlier.
Okay, thank you.
And then this is just the graph that's also done by the Minnesota Department of Health, just showing the difference in the deaths that we're seeing due to COVID, you know, comparing those that are fully vaccinated versus those that are not vaccinated. So the green line represents those that are fully vaccinated, so you can see a very low trend line, and then the blue line is those that are, or that are not vaccinated, and you can see there's a huge gap in the number of deaths that we're seeing. Jamie will talk about the vaccine data.
Okay, we'll look at the vaccine and testing next, so the first slide here, looking at the number of people with at least one dose, we are at 74.1% for those five and over across the state of Minnesota, and then 69.6%, so pushing 70% for those that have completed the series, and one point, or excuse me, 2.1 million have received a booster or a third dose. And then, we've talked a little bit about Clay County, so we're still sitting at about 60% in the data that they're sharing with us on the website for those that are five and over that are fully vaccinated in Clay County. And then we'll go to the next slide, and then looking at the vaccine administered by Clay County Public Health alone, 19,241 doses, and 99 of those doses were administered last week. We'll go to the next slide. And then for the week of February 7th through the 9th, or the 11th, we have a breakdown of the doses that were given, of the 99, 72 of those, I mentioned we went to Concordia, we're invited there, 72 of those doses were administered at Concordia, and then also 27 of them at the family service centers, so the majority of them, 87 of the 99, were the third doses or booster doses. Look at the clinic plan for this week, so this week we're offering Moderna and Pfizer. So the Moderna is, you know, anyone 18 and over is eligible for a first, second, or a booster dose. Pfizer, anyone 12 or over is eligible for the first, second, and booster dose. And then we also have in the afternoon, from 3:00 to 5:00, we're also offering the first and second doses, which is what's eligible, the 5 through 11-year-olds, so no booster eligible for that population, that's why we break it down that way. And then, anyone basically looking for a booster is eligible in the afternoon as well. So, those clinics are posted on our website, you can register for them. We are going to be in the public health office again because of our low numbers, but we have the ITV room available if we need to move back. We talked a little bit last week about the six-month through the four-year-olds, and that the FDA was going to be reviewing that today, I believe it was, and they did, Pfizer asked for an extension on that because they want to look at the third dose, basically, if there's a need for a third dose. So our kids, when they are eligible for a flu vaccine, that very first year, they don't just get one dose like the rest of us do, they get two. So they're looking at if they authorize the two right now, is that enough, or should they have three, as the rest of the people are getting the two in that base? So that's what they're looking at, just looking at that data before they move forwards. And then, looking at the testing, the next slide, the vault testing site, the total doses, or total tests have been 103,393 to date. Becky has this slide put together for us to look at the positivity rate, but we also have our data of the breakdown here. But it was January 2nd that we really saw, you know, a spike, that we started to go in, the positivity rate was at 25.8, and then our peak was on January 16th, where we saw a positivity rate of 27.45, and now you can see we're trending down. So this past, January 30th, we had a 19.08 positivity rate. So looking at the positivity rate, and, you know, watching this data, and then also our cases, you know, really is showing us that, what's going on in terms of the community spread, and so it's a good way for us to kind of measure not just statewide, but what's going on in our own community. So we're thankful for the opportunity of the vault site that we have, even if our hours are not meeting our needs, we're thankful that they continue to serve us here. And then, looking at our breakdown, last week we didn't have the breakdown of the positivity for the saliva testing and the rapid test. Saliva is the PCR test, which is the lab confirmed, and then the rapid test, you get your results right there, and the positivity rate for the saliva test for the week of January 30th was 24.05, and positivity for the rapid test were 15.77. And then you can see the breakdown of the number of tests that we had, so there was 1,520 total tests that week of January 30th, and of those, 290 were positive, so, looking at.
Okay, questions? Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. At what point, you know, the discussion is always about now in terms of, for Clay County and our sites, is the mask issue. At what point was it that we reinstated that?
When, I'm sorry if I'm jumping ahead of you, when, at the end of December, this board made a motion to end our masking policy, and at that time, the active cases in Minnesota was 26,106, and our weekly new cases were 325. Two weeks later, as you can see in the maps, we saw the trends, and then there was a motion to reinstate the policy, but I, that's the threshold that we had removed them last time.
But just a, just a slight correction, I think when we, we removed the, we didn't remove the mask policy entirely.
In December we did, two weeks later, we reinstated it.
But we still had, there was still a policy about, even then, even though...
If you're unvaccinated.
If you're unvaccinated, we still had a policy that basically followed CDC guidelines in terms of, so there still was a policy there, but it just, it wasn't a mandatory everybody wear mask going into our facilities. And I guess I'm at the point where, it's my understanding that effective yesterday, all the more at schools no longer require masks, is that correct?
Yes, the last elementary schools were removed yesterday.
You know, and I see these trends, I don't, the positivity rate is still a little concerning to me, but we don't have the data, the last data we have is January 30th, and it's those last two weeks that we really have seen the drop, you know? But, you know, and I know Kathy, back when we reinstated it, it was, it was your recommendation that was the reason that I supported putting the mask mandate back on, and I, I don't want to put pressure on you, but I'm just wondering, you know, at some point in time, we need to keep reviewing this, and we said all along that we would review it, and if we're getting close to numbers that we were at before, and we felt comfortable not having that policy in place, are we getting close to that again now?
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioner Campbell, we actually were reviewing all that. The CDC, of course, isn't changing their masking guidance, but they're covering the whole US, and there's areas in the United States that the numbers aren't going down, they're not trending down. So they really can't generally say that we can end the mask mandate. There's also people that are still unvaccinated, and we'll always have those individuals. What the national experts are saying is, really becomes local. So what's happening locally in your community, and so, and that's where it should be, because all the communities are really trending differently. So, we're optimistic, as you saw, the numbers are going down, our positivity rates going down, you know, we don't anticipate, you know, one national expert thinks we're on the downward trend, even across the whole US. That's again, a prediction based on his, the data that he's seeing. So I'm optimistic that we're in the right direction, that we're in a downward trend, so it's certainly the opportunity to, you know, do we need to have a mask mandate? There's many states that are not, are ending their mask mandates, just like the schools, so it's certainly the time to say it's optional. I'm not hard and set on we have to continue, the thing is, if we see a spike, you know, then we change course again.
I don't mean to put the political pressure on you to make that decision, that is our job, to do that, but, but what I do, and what my vote is dependent on, is your professional opinion, and that's what I'm looking for. And if you're, you know, if you're comfortable in that, then that's good for me, but that, again, each of us have to, have to make that decision as a policy, so.
Yeah, Madam Chair and Commissioner Campbell, I think, you know, as we look at the numbers, they're clearly, even across the river, in Cass County, they're trending down. As we talked with the hospital CMOs just a day or two ago, they're optimistic about the cases, not seeing, they're trending down, the number of staff they have that have been out with COVID-related illness is minimal now, it's very manageable, they're managing their beds, they're managing the numbers that they're seeing in COVID, so they're really feeling comfortable with those numbers. The acuity of other cases that are non-COVID are really keeping them busy, so it's the non-COVID acute medical cases. So, you know, based on what we're hearing from CMOs, based on our data, you know, kind of speaks for what's happening locally, so.
Do we have a lot of employees out with COVID, I mean, what's our counter?
Not right now, we haven't gotten a lot of forms back that people are out right now. Back when we peaked several weeks ago, we had fairly a lot of employees out, but as of right now, I don't think I've received a form for probably a week and a half, maybe two weeks.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I, I noticed a lot of our county employees out and about, and it seems like the only place that I'm seeing them wearing masks is here, and it's because we make them. And I'm, I guess I'm, is confident, I wasn't putting the mask mandate on, I think it's time that we look at, going back to where we were prior to this, where we still have a strong recommendation to wear, and especially if you're not vaccinated. And I think we had the appropriate signage, didn't we?
Yes.
Mark, is that a, hit Mark, is head nodding yes that we did in that regard? So, I think we're moving in that right direction, and I would, I would move that we go back to the previous policy.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to revert to our policy earlier, which was a strong recommendation and requirement for those who are unvaccinated, signage could happen.
Again, last time it was, I moved to put the mask on effective the next day, and I would say effective tomorrow.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell, and a second by Commissioner Gross. Do you have comments? Commissioner Kaylee.
Kathy, last night, you had a date with the city council, thank you for spending your Valentine's evening talking to more officials about these things and answering questions, and I did watch that portion, and I noticed that the preliminary number that you shared for case counts last night was 66, and then this morning, that number has been updated, and it went up to 154. So, in just a couple of days, that more than doubled. And then when I look back at last week's numbers, you know, we went up another 100 from that preliminary number, but that also was still scaling back the next several weeks as well. So the number that had been reported for the 23rd at 680 has now gone up to 905. So, it's hard to make choices based on these numbers when, two weeks later, they're still increasing substantially. I feel like it's not time yet, and we could slow our roll a little bit, and wait a couple weeks, week, see what happens. I agree, yes, absolutely, it looks like we are on a downturn, but that doesn't mean that it's gone, it's still here, there's still a lot of cases in the community. The positivity rate is still really high at that vault testing site, so I would just urge that we slow our roll, and pause.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioner Kaylee, just...
Can I just, yeah, thank, I just want to comment on the new cases, and, you know, granted, I'll even add another 100 like it was done the previous week, 154, that'd put us 200, that's 254 in a week's time of new cases, right? That's not a daily average.
Correct.
That's in a week's time. We were at, at one point in time, we were looking at, what, how many new cases per day? We were looking at potentially 300 new cases a day, and now we're down to, you know, if you look at this, we're probably down to more like 40 or 50 new cases per day on average. That's throughout the county with 65,000 people. So, I guess that's, to me, I think that's a pretty small number.
Thank you.
In comparison, I mean, every one is important, every case is important.
Thank you, and I think as this board tries to find some sort of consistency in what our policy is in regards to managing masking policies, I think it's important that we stay as consistent as possible, I think that's helpful for credibility, I think our message all along is to continue to practice good hygiene and get vaccinated, and mask when you can, if you feel comfortable with that. But I think if we look back at when this board did make a motion to get rid of the mask mandate, the state counts were 26,106. State of Minnesota active cases right now is 8,687, and we're below the threshold for new counts on a weekly basis. I still think that we have a lot to learn in how this virus continues to live and grow, but I think we have to figure out what is our new normal, living with infectious diseases. I think that, that's what all... I think that, that's what all states and municipalities are trying to figure out right now, too.
How many of these cases, do we know that they're not just the flu or that they're COVID? Do we, I mean, is that pretty well diagnosed that this one's flu, this one's COVID?
Yep. Madam Chair and Commissioner Gross, yes. They, all the cases, we know that they've been tested specifically for COVID. Influenza is around and there's a number of cases circulating with influenza that's a separate test. So in some cases, if, if someone is quite ill, they'll test them for both influenza and COVID, two separate tests. So, yeah, it's, it's clearly defined. And Madam Chair, the, one thing to mention is, as Jamie reported, the statewide vaccination rates, so 70% was also a target. And we're at that 70% with the one dose, just 1% under with the 60, 68 or 69%. So we're right at that threshold where that's also a marker. 70% was the target where we're feeling pretty confident about people getting vaccinated, although Clay County doesn't show that. We've reported it weekly that our, we know our numbers aren't accurate because people, you know, there's some things that don't come on the, the registry. So we can't, we can't track all of the people that were vaccinated when they've been to pharmacies and other facilities. So we're pretty confident that our numbers in Clay County mirror what the state.
Commissioner Campbell and then Commissioner Kaylee.
Yeah, I just, I just want to point out that Commissioner Moja mentioned something to me that is significant, and that is the fact that we need to be consistent with our policies. And we had policies when we took things off and when we put things on. And, and now we're in a position, we're at a point where, where it matches, where we didn't have to have the policy. And so for us to say now, we should have the policy now, but we didn't have it back then when the numbers were the same, especially when everything is showing a decline. Now, if, if you'd come to us this week and said, well, that decline has leveled off even, I would, I would have my concerns about making the motion that I made today. But based on what I am seeing and hearing in these numbers, it goes back to where we were before this. And I just, I just think we need to move forward on, on this. And, and like I said, we're gonna, I think we're gonna have this conversation for the rest of our lives in terms of.
Commissioner.
These, these, this pandemic, hopefully pretty soon you're gonna just say it's an endemic and we're gonna move on.
Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you. And I certainly understand that consistency piece. My, my concern is that I, I don't feel like it's an apple or just, apples or, or it is an apples or just comparison because with the prevalence of at-home testing right now, we're not getting those cases reported unless they then go in and have another lab confirmed case with a provider. My question is, I know that there's a lot of testing going on at our schools right now. Are those cases being reported to the state? Or is that kind of like an at-home test where we don't get that data?
Commissioner Moja? Those are reported to the state. They're required to report them to the state, as well as our long-term care facilities that are testing.
Okay. Commissioner Gross?
Okay, I realize now that we can all order our home test case, you know. I just got notice mine's coming in a couple of days, whatever. I mean, those wouldn't be reported either if you take a test at home, is it? You have to, if I take a test at home, is there a need for me to report it somewhere or?
That I don't know, what that process is done, you know, how that works, if they actually are connected to watch you do it or not. I don't know about that. I haven't received mine yet.
There's, I think there's both. There's some that you need to connect through the app, take the test with a proxy. There's also tests that you're taking on your own, which I think Commissioner Kaylee had referenced. I think it's all part of it. I think, just to add maybe some points is, I know several people who took the at-home tests that were provided by the school. And some members of the family had received a positive in one of that. They picked up, everybody went to the testing site to test. I think that it's hard to understand 100% of the data when some people are going through the line, maybe get a positive or not in the rapid, and then decide to go to the other test to, I mean, we're, there's some, we're not getting unduplicated information. So I think there is part of, a very valid point that there are tests and maybe positives happening at, at home. We're not seeing that. There is the other part of it where people are receiving positives at home, want to go in, be tested so that they can make sure that it's being reported, but also that there are contact tracing that is happening. So I, I think there's a lot, a lot of different avenues. And, you know, I, for me, what's important is that our hospital system is not overloaded. And I've said that all along. If you came to me and said Sanford had zero beds, that's an indicator. And we are seeing a release in what that stranglehold was for available beds. There are more available beds that, that we had seen earlier. And, you know, I, none of us have the crystal ball. I mean, that's the reality. None of us knew two years ago what this would end up happening. We continue to need to do our best on campus to make sure that we're hearing departments' concerns. But I'm not hearing concerns from employees or even the public about the practices at the county courthouse. Commissioner Ebinger has not spoken.
You know, we eliminated the mask requirements on our campuses, or our campus and our properties. And then two weeks later, we were back there. And I know it was because Omnicron came on so fast, so hard. I think we need consistency, but I don't think there's a, a artificial line out there. I think we need to make sure that the downward trend is going to continue. Another week, another two weeks. Not speculate on what these numbers that we know are incomplete and it's not through, through our, our public health people's fault, there's a lag in the data. And I would just feel better, before we do something, even though it's only a minor precaution, taking care of the people that come to our campuses and work on our campus. I want to give it a couple more weeks and see if we see a pattern established that gives us, we can not make the mistake we made before. There may be something else around the corner. Let's make sure that what we're seeing in this trend reaches the point to where we're, we're comfortable that we've made it through. There may be another variant out there at some point. And we'll be, you know, if we drop it in two weeks, we'll be right back to doing it in a couple of, a couple of weeks after that. But at least at that point, we'll know what we're dealing, more of what we're dealing with. There's too much unknown here for me to feel comfortable taking anything backward.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I want to go back to the at-home tests. And I know Commissioner Kaylee brought that up and it, and it is a good point. But I also know that, that I have personally talked with many people who've taken it, the at-home tests and they've been negative. And those have also never been reported as part of the process. So that could also have an impact on the positivity rate that aren't reported. So, so you can, you know, again, it's, it's how you, you can, you can look at it either way. But I know in my family, I've had a lot of family members that were concerned about, because they were around COVID. And they took, all took the tests and they were all negative. As a matter of fact, they did it more than once and they, and they, they were negative, so. And then I, I, just going to Commissioner Ebinger, I, I don't, I don't think we made a mistake the last time we took the mask mandate off. I think we did it based on, on the numbers that were present at the time. And I'm not going to be afraid to put it back, you know, for us to do this, it's a, it's a board vote and it's a matter of a little bit of work on Mark's part or whatever, that we go in, we just put the signs back up again on the next day and it's done. But this is something that, and again, I am, I'm seeing and I'm visiting with county employees who are, they're, they're comfortable with, with it off. And that's why I'm supporting it, so.
Okay, any comments? Any other comments? We do have a motion and a second on the table. Any other comments? Colleen, can we have a roll call, please? I'm, sorry.
No.
Yes.
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 No.
Okay, thank you. We do have a three to two vote, but the motion will pass effective in the morning, if that works in terms of signage. I do have one follow-up regarding the vault testing site. Certainly, I saw another article that our calls for increased and more convenient timing is continuing to go unheard. Are you, what is the messaging you're hearing from the state in regards to the community testing sites? It seems like their messaging is really to encourage more, more at-home testing. Are, are we confident that that site will stay open for, for a while now? Or we, what are we hearing?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we, we're hearing that, they said the spring, that they would be open till the spring. So what month that will be, I'm, I'm not sure. They haven't confirmed that. Yes, we did hear that they didn't feel the need to expand the hours, open them up earlier in the morning. And they didn't feel the need to, to add any additional days. So we got, you know, that was kind of the answer. We did get some test kits that we got out to some populations that may be hard to reach. So our new individual that we hired as variable hour for the diversity and inclusion, got test kits out to many of the organizations that serve populations of diversity. So that was good. We got those test kits out a couple of weeks ago. We're getting masks out to those individuals as well and to the general population. I think we got 10,000 masks. So it was a, quite a percentage of masks that we got what we requested. They only had 70,000 throughout the whole state. So we're getting those out with that person that we hired as well. So we're meeting a lot of the testing needs and masking needs, so, I mean, that's good. I think the vault site will obviously continue for at least a couple more months, maybe a few more months. We haven't heard about any closure date.
And I think the other piece is that the messaging from MDH and the governor's office seems to encourage folks utilizing those testing sites, being people that are showing clinical symptoms of COVID, maybe not as a mitigation tool. Certainly, I tested myself this morning with a rapid test at home. And so I think they're encouraging people to, if, if you want to just make sure that you're, you're clear for your workplace, to order those tests online and do that at home.
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to remind folks, so what we did today is we still are, we were highly recommending masks.
Yes.
Especially if you haven't been vaccinated going into our, our county facilities. This last week, I had a physical at Sanford and, and Moorhead, and I went in wearing a cloth mask like this. And they had me change my mask. And the reason they did it is they probably felt that it maybe wasn't as protective as another type of mask was. So there's a lot of things, even wearing masks, that, you know, there's, there's some unknown, you know, how you wear them, how tight they are, and all those types of things also can come into play. And so, I mean, it just, that's the science of it. I guess that's, that's frustrating, but.
And Madam Chair and Commissioner Campbell, that, that's true, the mask, the masks, there's lots of information about the cloth versus the, the other ones and the N95s. The N95s or KN95s are very difficult to wear for a full day. They just are, because they're very tight fitting and they're, they're hard to wear. So one of the national infectious disease experts said, it's probably impossible to think the general population is going to wear an N95 for a full day. You can maybe get by when you're in the medical healthcare system because you have to. But just for the general population, it sure is the best mask. But we can expect that the general population is going to be able to wear that.
So, and we're still expecting the social distancing and all those things that we've all done and all part of the process to, to slow the spread down. And none of that's going away.
Commissioner Campbell.
All of those things are still recommended.
And, and the one more thing is, when you mentioned the unvaccinated, we also want people that are, have underlying health conditions to be extra careful as well. So still continue to mask and, and do all of those things because it's those individuals that also are at risk for, you know, significant illness.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work and we'll look forward to meeting your new hire next week.
Okay.
Thanks. Item four is our annual department update, our assessor, Nancy Gunderson. Thank you for your patience. Well, we're a little behind.
COVID.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, everyone. First of all, we'll start with staffing. As of December 1st, we're fully staffed. Tracy, she's our front office support person. And then we have three full-time appraisers, Greg, Lisa and Kelsey. So we're glad to have a full staff. We wrapped up the 2021 assessment mid-January as it relates to splits, combinations, granting of homesteads and extending any qualifying tax programs to our taxpayers. And that file now has been turned over to our auditor for tax calculation. Mass appraisal, we did onsite visits. We didn't do interiors, but we did visit all the improved properties during 21 for assessment 22. And we completed work in Saban and Yulin City, Eglin, Holy Cross, Kurtz, Morken and Yulin Township. We did about a total of 2,000 parcels and that met our quintile goals. Along with follow-up to zoning certificates and building permits, which based on planning and zoning, was a banner year for issued permits. Close to 500 permits countywide in 21, along with any permits that were under construction the year prior. So about 700 impacted parcels. Roughly 55 new home permits were issued in 21. This does not include the city of Moorhead. But that would be in areas where we are offering the two-year residential rebate. So 55 new homes were permitted. We're setting rates now for assessment 22. And that's based on activity from October of 2020 through September of 21. As we prepare to set the values for the 22 assessment, I want to share with you an update on the market trends that we've seen this past year and what it means for the 2022 assessed values. Values are set as of January 2nd each year and are based primarily on market activity, meaning valid sales from October to the following September. These market rate trends are calculated by the Minnesota Department of Revenue's Data and Analysis Department for every class of property, ag, apartment, commercial, industrial, residential and seasonal residential recreation, which also has a caveat of on and off water. And that, of course, is all based on valid sales. This is completed for every county in the state. These trends are used to forward adjust sale prices as the market changes on January 2nd assessment date, which is what we're required to base our assessed values on. In 2021, as the market changed, the housing market in Clay County, throughout the state of Minnesota and nationally, has increased dramatically. Mortgage rates were historically low, construction costs historically high, and the demand for housing outpaced the number of properties available. I believe the public is well aware of the rising home prices that have occurred throughout the county. As a result, Clay County has a positive residential market trend of 8.98%. The city of Moorhead has a positive market trend of 9.33%. This is the highest that Moorhead has seen since this adjustment began. I'll highlight countywide ratios in the three main property type areas. Any jurisdiction that has six or more sales will have to have standalone ratios. And again, that means that the ending median ratio must be within the compliance range of 90 to 105. Also, the DOR calculates a five-year history and a small. Also, the DOR calculates a five-year history and a small sample report. These reports are used to review if there's a pattern of low or high ratios during a five-year period that might warrant some attention by the county. And this year, there were multiple jurisdictions and property types that needed to be reviewed. So, for our residential and seasonal residential properties, we had 307 valid sales. This is without the city of Moorhead. Our median sales ratio, which means that you take the 2021 estimated market value and divide it by the time adjusted sale price, our ratio is starting at 81.43%. If we include Moorhead sales, we are then at 1,038 sales, and that median ratio is at 82.43%.
And we need to be at 90.
Yes, at least. Ag sales, we had 34 sales countywide of ag bare land that are 34 and 1/2 acres or more. And that had a positive market trend impacting it of 10.43%. The median sales ratio is at 80.12% with that applied trend. Commercial, we had seven sales without the city of Moorhead. No market trend was applied, but our starting ratio is at 95.7%. So, at this time, no plan changes are in. Resident, or industrial, we had five sales without the city of Moorhead, no market trend, but we have a starting ratio of 77.8%. This property type was flagged for low ratios over the past five years. Valuation on industrial-use properties will be seeing an increase for assessment '22. Improvements such as warehouses, storage, manufacturing, and uses such as gravel pits will be seeing a change. Apartments, we had two sales outside of the county. We have a high ratio of 140.57. When we add in Moorhead, we have 32, 23 sales, and our starting ratio is at 91%. There's no market trend applied to those. While the positive market trends will impact our starting ratios, the sale prices themselves came anywhere from 50,000, 200,000, and as much as doubled our '21 EMVs. What this means is that most parcels will be seeing a change in their EMVs for assessment '22. There will be no blanket increases applied to the county. Consideration is given to different locations in the county. Example, Tullible Land, the type of improvements on the property. Again, location, style of the home, size of the home, those types of things. So, for residential and our ag house and garage, countywide, the percentage increases will be anywhere from 10 to 20%, depending on the area. City of Moorhead is projecting anywhere from 7 to 10%. Tullible Valley Land will be seeing a large increase in assessed value, close to 20%. This again is getting back to about our 15 or 16 assessment values and 14 assessment was the highest that we'd had in considerable time. But we are getting back to that.
Nancy, can I interject really quickly?
Sure.
Commissioner Campbell and I are on the Moorhead-Clay County JPA, dealing with land affected by the Diversion Authority. And, and I think it's an understatement probably, and you know this, that land sales, ag land sales are really seeing an increase. And I think what's hard for us is your assessed value is really good for right that day in terms of assessments for these properties, because land, farmland is changing so much. You know, I don't know if it's helpful to have your department copied on some of those agenda items to just be aware, but certainly Commissioner Campbell and I have had discussion about the difficulty maybe in determining a fair price for some of these buyouts when land, for instance, I know I, I saw some farmland had gone for over $8,000, and the assessed value was closer in that $52, $5,500 range. And so, just, I think, increased communication between your department and maybe those of us serving on that board might be helpful as we discern fair prices, I think, for those purchase orders going forward.
If I can, I would, I would agree with that. I think it's important, I mean, this is a critical project that's going on, and it's, and it's requiring a significant amount of, of land being acquired in Minnesota. If it's not outright purchase, it might be flow adjustment issues or whatever. And that's based on the value, market, estimated market value of land. It can be. And it's important for us to have updated information on that. Sometimes, by the time it gets on the tax statement, it's, it's old data compared to the time when it's, when it's being moved on. And, and so, when we're trying to be fair with our landowners in these costs, I think, I think Commissioner Moser raised a good point where we, where we might want to, if you're willing to even come in and, and talk to us in some of those instances as, as another board. We're an established governing board on the Minnesota side for that purpose. Because we've said all along, and our, our county board is fully supportive of making sure all of our landowners are treated fairly in that regard. And when I started hearing numbers of 10 to 20% higher than what was previously shown, that needs to be reflected in treating them fairly on what the real values are. So, I, I agree with you on that. And I, I will have a couple more questions after a little bit.
Thank you. Again, Tullible Valley Land will be seeing a large increase, close to 20%. And then there's some other ones, like Georgetown Township will be closer to 30%. And Eglin Township will be seeing about a 16% in the Tullible. Industrial properties will see anywhere from a 10 to 20% increase throughout the county. While this is not impacting just Clay County, our neighboring counties are seeing substantial market increases as well. The one handout that I have that is the state of Minnesota, you can see how the time trend, and this is on ag land, you know, they're just huge. One of the examples is Norman County is at 14.48% time trend, Otter Tail County 19.4%, Becker County 15.23%, and that's on the ag land values. So, it's happening across the whole state. I don't have a map that reflects on residential. I have a huge spreadsheet that came from the Department of Revenue, but it is statewide. And some of those trends that are close to us, Norman County is over 20%. Becker County, without Detroit Lakes and off waters, at 15%. These are just huge. These are huge market trends that occurred during this past year. Another handout in your packet is kind of talking a little bit about what your value doing in a market where it is really appreciating. On the backside, there is a small graph, and that depicts our market trend of 8.98% out county, not including the city of Moorhead. How a person who purchased a home for 300,000 January of '21 would now have an anticipated market value of 326,000 as of January '22. So, I'm sure taxpayers will be questioning and trying, we'll try to explain to them about it, market trend, and go forward at that. So, our local boards might be an interesting time. In '21, we had seven local boards scheduled. One did not have a certified member in attendance, so they lost their board meeting for two years. So, there's only six jurisdictions this year that will be having their own local boards. And we did send out notifications to those boards for them to post and publish that meeting. The rest of the counties, cities, and townships will hold the open book format. And those are all scheduled for April 21st at the Government Center. County Board of Equalization has been scheduled, and it's scheduled for June 14th with a start time of 6:30 PM. So, that is the time for people to come forward and appeal their valuations and classifications. New assess, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I just want to, not necessarily a question, but a couple of comments. The, I mean, these are, these are going to be significant. And the minute our, our residents, our homeowners in our communities see these, the first inkling is going to be, oh, they're raising this so that they can get more tax dollars from us. That's, that's, it's a pretty common, but in reality, across the board, if everybody's value is increased the same, if everybody had a 10% increased value, the likelihood of, of a change in actual property tax wouldn't be that significant unless it, it all depends on how the, the board deals with the budget. If the board, if the board spends a lot more money, then the taxes would even, would go up. But proportionally, because somebody has a 20%, and we're, I'm hearing you say that maybe some of our ag lands might go up 20% in their, in their estimated market value, which can, they may see a little bigger, because if they go up 10% in residential in Moorhead, a residential in Barnesville or Dilworth is 10%, then that ag community is going to probably take a little, little bigger piece of the pie proportionally.
If every mark, a value went up by the same percentage and your budgets held, there wouldn't be. But-
Exactly what I wanted to hear you say, yeah.
But, you know, not everyone is going to go up 19%.
Right.
Some would be 13, some could be 10. It just depends on their location and what, what it is. But it's a form of trying to spread them, the taxes that are levied to people.
And again, I, you know, the, the perception is, okay, well, boy, my house value increased by 20%. They just want to get more tax dollars. That, that isn't true.
No, because I have no idea what you're planning to spend. I have to follow what the market is. And if I don't do it, and if our ratios all come in below that compliance, then the Department of Revenue will step in and just do blanket changes. So, values would get changed if I did nothing at all. They still would get changed to some degree.
Thank you.
Other questions? Right? Nancy?
We will be also doing new assessment rates will be applied this year. Rates increased by a quarter per record. So, oh, and then we'll also do new record counts as well. So, an improved record will now be at $8, and an unimproved record will go at $3. And that schedule was approved by the commissioners back in February of 2018. So, we're just following that schedule. And just to highlight our tax court, currently, we do have some petitions. We have one case in the city of Dilworth, which is involving Walmart, and that's for pay 21. We have an estimated market value there of roughly 9.5 million. We have four cases in Moorhead. 30th Avenue Partners, it is office buildings, and that's for pay 20, and that's at 1.2 million roughly. A Steve, which is on the Running Store in the brand-new Autozone out on Highway 10, for pay 21, there's an estimated market value of around 3.6 million on that. And the Running Supply themselves also filed on their property. They only filed on one parcel for pay 21. So, we have a value roughly 3.3 million there. And Letnus Brothers, it's a restaurant bar, for pay 21 and roughly 1.5 million. So, if you add up all of those parcels, the estimated market value is close to 16 million in value. We also have had cases dismissed or stipulated during '21. The CVS in Dilworth, we had a pay 21 and pay 20, excuse me, pay 19 and a pay 20. Both of those were dismissed. Walmart, we had a pay 20 and a pay 21. We stipulated to no value changes for both those years, but we did drop value, $72,400 for pay 22. So, I'm not quite sure why. They filed a pay 21 again. It is a different attorney, so maybe that's part of the issue. But we already have a stipulation of no value change on the books for them. And then Menards Pay 19, that was dismissed. So, I'd like to thank the county attorney, Brian Melton, and also Nathan Akri at the city of Moorhead for their diligence in working through these cases. And we appreciate that very much to do the best we can for our taxpayers.
Thank you. Great update. Board questions? You've been really busy. Thank you so much, Nancy.
You're welcome.
For the update.
Have a good day.
Yes, you as well. Item five is our annual department update from our Information Services Director, Mark Sloan. Good morning, Mark.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I put a handout on your desk. It looks kind of like this with a bunch of boxes on it. I'm going to talk about that and go over what exactly Information Services is up to. Clay County Information Services Department's goal is to put the right information into the hands of our employees, partner organizations, and our residents. An emphasis is placed on proactively developing data and services to improve overall access to county information. The Information Services Department consists of three full-time staff, a director, a GIS specialist, and a web specialist. And we have two variable-hour employees, a multimedia technician and a GIS technician. Interestingly enough, myself, our GIS specialist, and our GIS technician all have spouses to work at Clay County. So, it's kind of a family thing to be working here. It means it's a good place to work. Under our GIS activities, we manage geographic information, specifically more than 300 layers of information in our GIS that we keep current. An example of that would be just this last fall, we, we revised how our zoning and layers are done and how their online maps work. We make maps. We do them both digitally and on paper. We have the capability to produce large-format printing, large-format laminating, a lot of things like that. We maintain the parcel fabric. It's one of the biggest databases that people use. We have 29,860 parcels. In 2021, we had 100 parcel splits, six plats, and two annexations that were integrated into that. We also generate addresses, specifically where the addressing authorities in Clay County, we had 168 new addresses issued in 2021. And we partnered with the Highway Department to provide information and mapping for our fire number sign replacement project, those blue signs. We did 1,277 signs last year, and they were here a couple of weeks ago talking about how they'll do another batch again this year. And we'll keep cycling through. Those signs are more than 20 years old, and we'll try to keep those current. We support emergency operations. Specifically, GIS has a desk in the Emergency Operations Center, and everything starts with a map. So, when there's an emergency, the very first question they want, they ask is, where's the map? Where is it? What, and we are ready to provide that to them. And we constantly keep our data sets that we use for emergency operations up to date. We'll be fine-tuning our flooding once here soon, just so that we're ready. But we are always working on that. We implement GIS applications. In 2021, we rolled out a new equitable property value application for the assessors, and that was actually presented to assessors and GIS group across the state. It's a pretty big deal. We have a new gravel inspection application for planning and zoning. We're working on a new online building permit application for planning and zoning, which we hope to roll out soon. We're redesigning our land records workflow management software to better fit how things work now. And then we're continuing to make huge strides in our facilities management system, which is using our GIS to manage our facilities. And, and we, it has been vital to assisting our Facilities Director in, in several of his projects, and we will continue to make that grow. And it's, it's, we're, we're doing some pretty amazing stuff there. We prepare and share data. We, we are an open data county, so all of our GIS data is open to the public. They can freely download it from our websites. We also do census as one, and one of the things you'll see very soon, I hope, is redistricting. And you'll get to see the power of what GIS can do. It's pretty, it'll make it a lot simpler when we do that. And I hope that we do that very soon. We're just waiting on the state and then our cities, and hopefully in the next few weeks.
Maybe then, just to follow up to the redistricting piece, Clay County is having a work group, our first work group. And I think you can update the board on your process and, and where you're at so far with that. And we will also be having public hearings so the public is aware of what's going on.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. We develop graphics and images. We assist, we assist by creating actual graphics. We assist, we assist by creating actual graphics. And like this last summer, we went out and took high-resolution photography of all 22 of our county-owned facilities. We provide GIS data for NG911. This is a statewide effort. An example, what we're doing there is our data is undergoing a transformation from the how we store it now to a new standard. What makes GIS so powerful is there's attributes attached to everything in it, to information. So like a road segment, if you click on it, it knows stuff. In our old system, we had 73 fields of information on each road segment. Our new one has 108. So we have to propagate all those additional fields, and it's been taking some effort. All of our GIS data previously and continuously will be, is fed to the Red River Regional Dispatch Center every month, and they, that's what they use actually in their dispatch facility, the stuff from us. We produce signage. We carry out several signage deployments across our county facilities, actually. And today, we'll be rolling out new mask signs, but that's something that we are fully prepared and capable to do. We assist local governments. We assist all of our cities with a myriad of things. One big one is if they have addressing coming up or issues, or we'll help them with that. We also assist our townships with a lot of things. Most recently, it's been mailing labels, because they're having their annual township meetings. We'll help them get that ready. And we've also been working with the townships to record their roads, so they, we've got 11 townships finished, and we're going to try to work on the other, other, what, be, bunch, 19. We, and, oh, and one other thing, we oversee remonumentation, which is our section corner remonumentation program, which has been ongoing for many years, and we continue slowly working our way around the county. We did 86 section corners in 2021, and that is a huge benefit to those people where we do in those section corners as far as costs go. We've been working in the southeast corner of the township, or the county, I mean, park, and that, that part down there, which is some of our most expensive, tensom, right down in there, is some of our most expensive corner to gather, because it's pretty remote. We had some corners they had to wait till winter to get into, because it's swamp. On the other side of the sheet, under Communication, which is our other division, we have GIS in Communications, our two divisions. We administer our Clay County websites. Our websites have been averaging about 80,000 visits a month. That's twice what we were seeing before COVID. So COVID has dramatically changed how people interact with the county. So just as an interesting tidbit, the single most visited webpage on our website is the inmate roster with 18,000 visits a month. It, it's the place people want to go, evidently. We broadcast meetings, like this one right now is being broadcast by our staff. We did 68 meetings that were streamed in 2021. We update the COVID information on the website. We also, we'll take the, like, the public health update that was just here. Those are actually cut out and published separately, so that it's easier for the public to find that information. We post to our, to our social media platforms through either news flashes from our main website. We also do specific posts made to both Facebook and Twitter for people to follow us. We edit video recordings besides the meetings, which are all edited before they're published. We also have portable equipment on hand so that we can, we can record events at other places, like, I think last year, we did the groundbreaking at the recovery facility. And we can do a lot of that kind of stuff. And then we, all of our videos are published to YouTube, but they're also archived on DVD. We have a copy of every meeting that we've ever recorded on DVD stored here on site in case we might ever need that.
Blockbuster.
Yeah, mhm, you bet. We train our staff on editing the website. We produce forms. Forms is a, specifically, we're talking fillable online forms, and we have the capability to do those secure, so that they can sign them, they can put secure information, and we can transmit that information back. We work with our departments on that, and we can also improve some workflows by doing that. Lately, we've been creating some online advertisements for job openings. We've been doing promoted Facebook advertisements, and they've gotten a lot of impression. We've been earning about 30,000 impressions on some of those ads, and our cost is five, $400 or $500 a month. So it's not a lot of money for the amount of people that are seeing it. I don't know for sure whether it's increasing how many people we hire, but people are seeing our ads, which is good. And then we operate our digital signage. You'll see that in our Law Enforcement Center, Correctional Facility, Family Service Center, and DMV lobbies, as well as in our Juvenile Center pods. And we create the content that's on all that signage. So the Information Services Department serves every county department, other organizations, and the citizens of Clay County. We're small and effective. Any questions?
Questions?
We, we do a lot.
I, I think it's also, should be noted that your department, specifically you, did a lot of help, have been part of our ARPA committee discussions. You were really helpful in terms of the, the business grants that we were trying to get out. So thank you for your presence on that committee as well.
You're welcome.
Well, we appreciate the effectiveness of your department, so thank you for your update. Item six, today is a request to move forward with the Family Service Center Door and Hardware Replacement Project, which is a capital improvement item. Good morning, Joe.
Morning, Madam Chair, board members. Quick comment, anything I've ever produced that's fancy came from Mark's department. So want to give that credit and get that out of the way.
Is that because your wife works at that department?
Yes, we'll give her credit as well.
All right, thank you.
Yes, so, so this is just coming to you today. We got some pricing back. This is what's called the FSC Door Hardware Replacement Project. Basically, it's the north entrance and the main entrance of the Family Service Center. North entrance has the double vestibule doors, and then the front as well. So this is to replace all the, all the doors and the handicap. They're all original, and they're, they're in real rough shape. So request to move forward, I got two quotes, and I did request for a little bit of contingency dollars, $2,500. Sometimes when you see the card access system has trouble driving with these doors when you put new one in. So I put a little bit of extra money in there in case you run into something there. So I'm requesting move forward with the low quote in the amount of $49,525. That's including the $2,500 contingency.
This was advertised. You would be recommending the low quote, correct?
Yeah, this was just a regular quote process where I reached out and got two quotes.
Questions from the board? Wishes for the board?
We discussed this at the bill and committee, and I make a motion we approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross and a second by Commissioner Campbell to approve the request. Come out of the capital bond as the funding stream. Any other comments?
And just a note, Madam Chair, we, $50,000 was the original budgeted item, so it was just under.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried. Thank you. The next item would be our committee reports, but I do see the closed session was advertised. Is there someone waiting at that time, or can we do that after, like, after? Okay. Item seven would be our committee reports. Commissioner Ebbinger.
Well, the only committee meeting I had was canceled. So unusually, I've got no report for the meeting today.
Sounds good. Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. On February 8th, we had a Highway Tracking Committee meeting. We had a significant discussion about the Township Maintenance Contract Schedule. We're going to be having those discussions with our engineers and, and our county department to determine what that annual per-mile rate will be. That will be coming up, and then that'll be coming before the board, I think on March 1st, for recommended approval. We had some discussion, there was that request that came, originally came through you, Commissioner Moser, regarding that sign for Grand Church and Cassaw 31. That has, that is in the process of being done.
Thank you.
The, there is, we had some discussion about an Otter Tail Power request for an easement adjacent to our Yulin shop and our new shop. And at this point in time, we figured that they have the appropriate property to probably do that on their own without needing to have an easement on our property. They're, they have property adjacent to ours. And then we talked about retirement of our, our sign foreman coming up in May and that process, and looking at getting somebody, that request, I think, will come next week. I don't know, Darren, if you've gotten that yet.
I haven't received that request, I don't think, yet. But I've talked to the person that's been leaving, and we have a good idea.
And because of all the potential things coming up, we did want to try to get a replacement and to start training in that a little bit early. So I think it's going to be on for next week. And then we did get a report on the North Broadway Bridge update, and the scope of the bridge removal is, and again, that's just the study to determine how to remove it. That estimated cost is $36,284, and Clay County shared the $18,000, of which is eligible for the state bridge funds to cover those costs. And that was my only committee report, but I did want to report that on last Friday, I did go to the American Legion for the reason-for-a-reason deal that was put on there. It was part of the Frostable. And I want to, you know, give a hats off to Sheriff Emting and Sheriff Johnor for the publicity on that. And what that was about was to raise awareness and funds. And they were going to do this for 44 hours. And that 44 hours, it represents 22 hours per day of the number of veterans that commit suicide daily on an annual basis. So it's, and then their, their goal for their fundraising this year was to raise funds to build a shelter at the National Cemetery that we have here locally. So again, hats off to the FM Legion Riders, that group, for being a real advocate on the part of veterans. And I think they, they raised a lot of funds, and I was, I was glad to be able to be there. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Gross?
On Tuesday, I too attended the Highway Tracking Committee meeting. It's no use to repeat what Commissioner Campbell just said. And on Wednesday, I had the Wild Rice Watershed Board, and my main discussions there was the permits being presented, and which was just routine stuff, and nothing new that really involved us, and just a monthly meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross, Commissioner Kaylee.
Like Commissioner Ebbinger, unusually, I have no reports either. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee. I also, last week, attended the Wild Rice Watershed Committee, and as usual, Commissioner Gross did a fantastic job of summarizing that meeting. Just a reminder for residents, the virtual Town Hall with Senator Kent Ekin, Representative Heather Keeler, and Representative Paul Markwart is this evening at 7:00 p.m. on the Zoom platform. So if you're interested in hearing from them about session work and items of interest, tune into that. Darren.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last Tuesday, I had a call with Josh Hageman, our Labor Attorney, on some of the contract negotiations that we had going on. I also had a very long meeting on our UKG, which is our new HR payroll system. We had our kickoff meeting on Tuesday, February 8th. And that is, has been and will be taking a lot of our time between now and April. We have a kickoff of April 4th is what we're looking at to transition everything from our optimum system to, to UKG. Had to complete a couple of evaluations and had a meeting with one of the department heads on personnel issues. On Wednesday, February 9th, we had our county management meeting. So we went through some, Roy gave a discussion on retention policies and reviewing some of the Verizon lines that we have that, that aren't being used quite a bit. So we're reevaluating that. We had interviews on Wednesday for the Deputy Auditor Treasurer Payroll Clerk. As you know, our payroll clerk's going to be leaving in May, I believe. And so we wanted to get somebody on, so there could be some overlap for that position. We finished up interviews that day and made an offer, and that was accepted. So that's good. We'll have an inbound payroll clerk, which is a good timing, because she'll be involved with the Son processing of, of the UKG system. And then on Wednesday, had another meeting with UKG. These are all virtual, of course. Thursday, February 10th, had another meeting with UKG, and also had the Correctional Facility Administrator interviews as well. Candidate has been selected for that and did accept. On Friday, I had a meeting with Brian Melton and Steve on some personnel ongoing issues. And yesterday, in-processed Azad, the new Diversity and Ethics Community Coordinator, which we've already covered earlier in the session, and had another meeting with UKG on implementation. So that was my report.
Thank you. Brian, do you have a report? Anything clean? Okay, if not, we do, the next item would be a closed session to discuss, discuss union contract negotiations.
Move to close.
We have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to close.
Second.
And a commissioner, a second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried. Take a few minutes to make sure it's closed down. All right, we are back on. We did have a motion by Commissioner Campbell to reopen, and a second by Commissioner Ebbinger. The board voted on that, and that passed. Is there any further business for the board? If not, we are adjourned.